Aha. To this Children and Families Overview and Scrutiny Panel meeting. We'll start off by any apologies?
Yes, Chairman, we've got apologies from Councillor Emma Marshall and Adam Johnston's also sent his apologies.
Thank you very much. Any public participation?
No, Chairman.
There is no? Thank you. Item four is confirmation of the minutes that was on the... Oh! Sorry. Item two, the declaration of interest. And any party whip? No? Okay. We'll then move on to item four, which is the confirmation of the minutes, which was the previous meeting on the 18th of November. They have been previously circulated. Are they a true and accurate record? Is that agreed? Thank you, Members. I'll sign. Thank you very much. Right, on to the first substantive item of two, which is the children missing in education, pages one to 12 of the agenda. And who's introducing this one? Over to you, Sarah. Thank you.
I'm starting the ball rolling, Chairman, if that's all right, and then I'll get a hand over to Sarah.
Fabulous.
So it's just a couple of comments, just to thank you for the opportunity to take questions on children missing education this afternoon. It's very timely, I think, as well, considering the announcement today regarding Children's Wellbeing Bill. So certainly timely regarding the importance of those children's education. And just to say that I'm delighted that we've got a full team of officers here to answer all of your detailed questions, including Matt from the virtual school. But I'm going to pass to Sarah, first of all, who's going to introduce the paper to you.
Thank you. Thanks, panel. And it's always exciting, pleasing to be able to present a report to understand some of our most vulnerable children's experiences and the connection and dependencies between their education and, you know, their wellbeing and their safety. So, hello, panel. I'm Sarah Wilkins, the Assistant Director for Education, as most colleagues know. And with me today is Matthew Stiles, who is our virtual school head teacher, which is a bit of a strange term, but Matt has the statutory responsibility for the council to oversee the education outcomes and the education welfare of our most vulnerable children, and that includes our children who are looked after. It is a statutory function that has been growing, and you will see the latest government as well continues to see the benefit of that and indeed give him more work to do. But Matt oversees some of our processes for our children missing education, so will be helpful in contributing today and responding to any particular questions. Daniella Carson, as you know, my colleague, Assistant Director for SEND and All Age Disability, also here, because there is a relevance for children missing education in terms of that additionality around their educational needs and disabilities. So, Chair, if you're happy, I've just got a few key points to make, not lengthy in terms of the paper, based on the assumption that everybody's read that. It's a paper that we've... The way that we formatted it, and you will have probably spotted, is to take... is to recognise children missing education and the importance of that kind of category or risk to children. It follows on from actually what was a scrutiny panel right at the beginning of this year, last January, when we talked about... we presented on children's attendance. And obviously, for scrutiny, that's really interesting about children's, you know, how and what we know about their attendance at school, how we support and promote that. But then, you know, comes that question of what if a child is not on the role of a school, which is our children missing education. So brought back to here, as we would expect and want to do, further information to today's paper. There's quite a lot of national interest in children missing education. You know, sadly, it is across the country an area of growth in numbers, but very positively growth in understanding, tracking and monitoring. And Worcestershire is good at the tracking and monitoring. That's been... you'll see in the paper, that's been endorsed by external scrutiny. One of the attached appendices, and there are a number, is the Local Government Ombudsman Report, Research Report, on their findings. And as part of that report, I'm sure the panel have seen, what they provide in that report is some questions for scrutiny. So that's how we formatted this paper, is to ask the questions that the LGO recommends to local authorities. So I hope that the scrutiny panel have found that's a helpful way, you know, of looking at this group of children. The paper describes, right at the beginning, what a child missing education is and what it isn't, because it is a definition and statutory guidance. That's really important. And Appendix A gives detail to panel members about some of the glossary and other definitions. It is a complex area to follow. The paper also flags up the responsibilities across the piece, and that's responsibilities for local authority, for schools, for partners and for parents as well. We've used the format of the LGO report, which I've just talked about. The report provides context and data, and those two tables in there, which are on page three, I think, of the report, talk about the overall context, but then that deep dive into our more vulnerable children that I would expect that you would want to see. Interestingly, the LGO report also refers to children... What... Ask yourselves the question, what do you know about children on part-time timetables? Which, now to contradict myself, draws us away from children missing education and talks about children who are on the role of the school. You might say, well, why do they do that? Because sometimes we can see there is a continuum of risk to get to a child where a point where a child may be missing education, and one of the kind of focused areas is, if a child's on a part-time timetable, what do we know of that? Is it a good thing? Is it a bad thing? How's it being monitored and measured? The LGO asked that. I've not omitted it from the questions, and we can talk about that in more detail. I think one of the key points I want to make, and no doubt you've picked it up as you've read the paper, is children missing education is a potential risk for all children. It is not exclusive to a small group of children, and it's important that we understand the reasons why children become missing from education. And there is a significant aspect of that, which is about the free movement of travel and the free movement of people. What Worcestershire... We describe the way that Worcestershire approached that, and we describe how we go beyond what is statutorily expected, in that we continue to track children when they have left our borders, including overseas. And you will read, and it was really positively supported by elected members and by our MPs, lobbying to Border Force and to the Minister last year to improve their response to our questions when we are trying to locate children who have travelled overseas. The paper details the processes. The paper also flags lots of information that is publicly available to families, and of course, we would, you know, want scrutiny panel members to have looked at that. I'm sure you have, and to promote that with your public. The... I think moving towards the sort of final points I'd want to make, the paper describes our current multi-agency working. We work really closely internally, but we have processes such as the Missing Mondays Panel, which bring in our other external providers like health to understand children's experiences. The new bill that Councillor Chambers has talked about today expects that to strengthen further. We do everything we can and we use every means that we can currently to use that to support children back into education. Relationships with schools is strong in Worcestershire. The paper details some of that. It's an important point of inquiry for the LGO. I think, other than that, I think the final point, there's a question in there from the LGO about, you know, ask yourselves how we learn from our complaints. I think we've been quite clear about that in the report, and certainly we do a lot of cross-service learning, and we will do more. What I would want to emphasise, Chair, is that not all of our learning has to come from complaints, and it doesn't. You know, we monitor, we track, we understand. It is an evolving and learning system. Do we always get it right? And Councillor Chambers said to me, you know, was asking me earlier, like I expect him to test hard, you know, how assured are you you're doing enough? Are you content with what you're doing? And I would say, well, we'll never be content. But do we utilise all of our mechanisms? And do we learn from our complaints as well as our own service and quality assurance information? I believe that we do. So I'm... Yeah, I'm pleased and proud to present this, and I hope you found it useful, and I'm sure you'll ask us all sorts of detailed questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Sarah. That was really, really informative and helpful. I will open it up to the floor. Any questions or comments? And I've got Brandon into back first.
Thank you, Chair. I have a number of questions, but I'll ask them one at a time, then let other people have a talk, because, Sarah, looking at the graph three, you see, and it talks about all the children missing education and the amount of inquiries you actually do throughout the year. What I don't see on here is... Or I'm missing it somewhere, but it talks about it on paragraph 32. Children with SND. They are registered to an actual school but do not attend for a particular reason. Are they on this graph as well or not? Because although they're classed as being in school, sorry, attached to a school, but as I say, for various reasons, they're not attending. And because the... That's the one question.
Sarah?
If I... I'll start this, and I expect Daniella will want to come in. So, Councillor Clayton, yes, the... A child missing education is, in the DFE terms, a child who is not on the role of the school, and that is the absolute focus of this report, though we have included children on part-time timetables. Yes, we will have children who have additional needs and indeed children who don't have additional needs that will be on the role of a school and not attending. And we do... They're not shown on this graph. They will be shown in our attendance data. So what you're particularly interested in, as are we all, and our SEND improvement plan is monitoring through improvement actions, is the... A reduction in the number of children who are severely absent with an EHC. If I just focus on with an education, health and care plan, or with what we call at an SEN support level, so with additional needs. So we monitor that separately. We actually report it through our scrutiny quarterly reporting as well, and is reported. In fact, next week at the SEND an alternative provision committee, I have an item where I'm reporting back to that committee, and Councillor Chambers sits on that committee on our severe absence. So a severe absence is a child who is attending, who is at home more than they're at school in very, very simple terms. So that's anything less than 50%. We monitor that quite carefully. I can get you the number. I will just need to get it off a spreadsheet. The numbers are relatively low, but that doesn't make it all right at all. That's a real concern. And what I will be reporting next week is, at this point of the year compared to last... This point last year, our severe absence for children with the HCPs has reduced a little. That doesn't mean, again, that everything's all right. But we... I would say, Chair, we go back to what is it that we're looking at? And if we... And scrutiny, of course, panel will be considering if they want to look further at attendance. And if they do, we'll bring a report back on that. But to answer the question, no, they're not on that report. Do we monitor them? Yes, we do. And are we reporting publicly on that? Yes, we are. Is that helpful?
It is, actually, but it's answered the one question very well, because I've tried to... Because I've got a couple of residents in my division, you see, who are children we send, you see, and obviously, they send me emails about different things and various things, you see, and that's the background for the particular questions that I'm asking, you see, just to get my understanding of this as well. Because when you talked about the education part as well, that was the other thing. Because although the children are not attending the school, we're still paying for the actual money for the school and things like that, you see, because that's the plan that we have, but that's for some of your girls I'm going to look at later on. I do want to compliment you, by the way, about the CCIS, because I think from the report, it's telling us that the different things which are going on there is bringing up good practice, shall we say, and that's to be commended. But it talks about also on page... Sorry, on paragraph 65, yep, about Missing Mondays, when you talk about the various children who are not attending a particular school, you see, for various reasons. And I'm just trying to work out, you see, because obviously, we read in the paper recently about the young girl who died, who her parents killed, and she wasn't attending school either. I know it's a different authority, but I'm not comparing that, but what I'm just trying to work out, you see. If there's a child missing and we have no... And they're not having any education tuition or whatever, you see, how do we keep an eye on those particular children? Because I don't know how many there are, you see, because as I say, when I look at the graph again, you see, I don't know whether on the lower graph, it talks about children in need, which is the purple block, and this here, it's six. So I'm just wondering, of those, the particular children that we don't know about who are not doing anything at all, are just missing?
Thank you. I think, Councillor Clayton, what you're raising is the question that sits with us all every day in terms of our worry. If we... If a child is not coming to school every day or coming to school very irregularly, and that's how we describe the kind of issue, is irregular attendance, how do we know that child is safe? Because school is a... And education is a huge protective factor. Now, we do, as citizens, all need to respect that it is the parent's responsibility and right to make a decision about how they educate your child, and we do need to respect that. And we have a system that supports that in terms of elective home education. You have raised, you know, a very high-profile case whereby a child was murdered by her parents, and in... Shortly before she was murdered, she was... They used the facility, if you like, and obviously, you know, this is in the public domain, to say that they were electively home educating her, and there's a big... There's a concern about that. So you can... And you can see as well that the government have announced their changes to prevent that from happening. We have to say for our children who are electively home educated and open to a child protection plan, there is very... There is very close monitoring of that, and I will ask Matt to come in in a moment to talk about Missing Mondays. But when Ofsted come in, and we ourselves are tested on, how... What are you doing about those children? How do you understand those children and who is seeing them? And of course, if that child is subject to a child protection plan, they will be seen on a 10-day cycle anyway. So we have very low numbers, and there's been very good scrutiny. But it does beg the... How can you use a facility to say, no, my child's... I'm keeping my child safe and I'm home educating them, when the risk is so severe there is a child protection plan? So I think what you're asking... You are asking those questions that you would expect everyone to ask, is if we can't see a child regularly, how do we know that they're safe? And you are asking, because you have your own resident saying, my child doesn't... My child's not coming to school, and perhaps you're saying as well, I don't know, that, you know, it doesn't seem like anybody sees them very much. Now, every organisation has a responsibility, so if a child is on the role of a school, the school needs to stay in touch with that child. And through our work, through Daniella's team and through Matt's team, we work with the relevant education lead. There will always be an education lead to make sure that that child is being seen. The numbers... So the numbers of children who are severely absent from school with a plan are... They are low numbers. Do we always need to make sure that we are working very closely to make sure those children are safe? Yes, we do. But we do also have to be very conscious of the parental right, which is to say, I don't want you to come into my home. Everything is all right. So it can be... It can look, I think, sometimes like we're not doing enough, but it is quite difficult sometimes with the parental view and the parental rights as they stand. So in terms of... I think if I just come back to the paper, Chair, and children who are not on the role of school, would that be... Because I just wanted Matt to speak very briefly about the role of Missing Monday to illustrate it would help, how we have oversight of those children who are vulnerable and do not have a school place. Is that okay? Thank you.
Thank you. As you mentioned, the two panels really that work in partnership is Missing Mondays Panel, which was introduced in 2018, and the more recent CAS Panel, which was introduced in September of last year. So for the Missing Mondays Panel, it's multi-agency panel, representatives from police, youth justice, health, education from the local authority, representative from the relevant education engagement teams, and from SEND every week. So we meet every single Monday, and the children and young people that are brought to that panel are those who are either not engaging with school and are children missing education, or children who are not in school, as in they do have a school place, but we are concerned that they aren't attending school, and there needs to be a multi-agency approach to helping them to engage with school and working with the family and child or young person. So that panel meets every single week, going through each of those cases and on a weekly basis, and in between those meetings, a lot of work happening to make sure that those children are engaged with education and have an education to engage with, and then each week, holding those agencies to account for delivering on those actions. Complementing that, you mentioned the CAS Panel. The CAS Panel was introduced more recently, because the CAS Panel is particularly for children who cannot attend school. Commonly in that panel, it's those who are experiencing low mood or anxiety or other medical conditions that mean they're unable to attend school. Often, they are, you know, they're very commonly on role at a school, but they're unable to attend that school place because of their needs. So that panel is working in a similar partnership, a really strong partnership, with lots of agencies, meeting every Tuesday, and also the schools come along, represent for that child or young person. Most importantly, making sure that we then collectively come up with an intervention plan to make sure that that child's needs are met either with or alongside their home school.
Thank you, Matt, for that. That's really helpful. Before I open it up to the floor, I do have a question and a comment myself that sort of follows on from you, but links directly into the data. So I think the starting point is, I think from reading the paper, I think our policies, our processes, the way we capture the data, I think is very, very good. The way we interact with partners across the board is very, very good. And I think the data I set out in the table, I think is a good... I think it's a good starter for 10, but for me, it doesn't tell the whole story. So the way I would have written it, or I would have asked for what the data is, that that gives the quantum of children missing education. But I think we need to sort of break it down a little more, i.e. those... Right, for example, those numbers of children who are missing education for, say, three to six months, six to nine, those are over 12, and those are over, say, 24. Because I suspect, and I would have broken it down by age as well, right? So I'll have lots of data, because the way that I see it is that you're going to have a number of those children who are going to be long-term missing education, I suspect. But surely, we want to capture, not physically capture, obviously, but look at those children who are short-term missing education, i.e. under three months, maybe maximum of six months, and get those back into education. So my starting question is, do you have any further data that breaks that down along my lines? Some are seeing nodding heads, that's really, really good. And what is the long... What the long-term numbers of those missing education? Also... Also, I'm slightly confused, and again, I think it needs more information behind it. So you have the total investigations in an academic year, and then you have closed investigations in it, but it doesn't give any narrative as to why they're closed. So are they being closed because we found the children, they're re-registered? Have we got legitimate answers that they're not in education? So... And obviously, on the back of that, you know, is relatively high numbers. And I'd be interested as well is those children... And I'd be interested as well, is those children who are not in education, but then who become re-registered to schools, whether it's Worcestershire, or they might be, you know, moved to a different part of the country, but re-registered in another school. So I'd be interested in that data as well, please.
I'll start, and Matt, who's just opened the spreadsheet. So he has got some information, and Chair, we can decide if there's something that you want us to present back to you in a table. We do in our quarterly data as well, do some analysis. So yes, we absolutely are, actually, if I just start with the ins and outs. So the investigations are, so there's a process which is identify, triage, because sometimes it can be an immediate closure, that actually just requires one phone call and we know a child is actually on the role of a school. We are very, very dependent, just as children's social care really are, to respond based on information that is fed in. Schools have a, everyone has a responsibility to report in. So what happens is, you have that investigation, which is, let's understand this child, find them. It only gets closed down, so the closed position is where the child is on the role of a school, or indeed, we have located the child, and then you are, let's say we locate a child to another local authority area, the child, we've got the address and we know where the child is, but the child's still not on the role of a school. But then we are handing, as is right, the responsibility to the other local authority to make sure the child is on a roll. So that's probably answered that bit of the question quite succinctly. So yes, we look at how long children are CME, missing education for. Matt will also, and we could talk about that, and Matt, it's probably worth as well, can describe, we don't just go, are you missing education, do nothing, because we have a responsibility to provide some form of education, so we will put something in in the meantime, and yes, ages and gender. So I'll hand to Matt before I then start to talk about facts that I haven't got precisely and tripped myself up. So Matt may have some more to add.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Sarah mentioned, we have CME caseworkers who see those cases through from outset until closure. And closure is a positive outcome in that those children have received what they need to receive, and we are assured that their needs are being met. So closure is almost always a positive thing. As Sarah said, it can be they've moved to a different local authority, we hand that over once you've established where they are, so, you know, it's a neutral thing then, and that local authority will pick it up, but they're never closed because of a negative outcome, so that's good data. The CME caseworkers will see it through from opening right the way through to that point, liaising with all professionals concerned. The number of cases where the child has been missing from education in the longer term and we are concerned are those cases which come through to missing Mondays, of which we have on the missing education part 26 at the moment. So the majority of children that are coming through as children missing education, as you know, Chair, are children who are perhaps moving into county or moving into country and for a short period of time, or moving back from elective home education, and from a short period of time, they are not on roll at a school, so we quickly get them on to roll at a school. And sometimes that's a really quick process, going through admissions, and they go on to their local school, and it's a simple, straightforward process. Sometimes where there are additional needs or additional considerations, that's a more complicated process, it needs multi-agency intervention, and potentially placing that child through a fair access panel.
Any other questions or comments? Well, councillor Jenkins, please.
Thank you, Chair. Got a few various questions, so quickly go through them. Just initial starting point, what are the kind of just understanding children missing education, what are the main kind of routes into becoming a child missing education? Because we talk about, so like, these part-time time tables, which seems to be kind of the initial starting point, they start on that, and gradually things happen, and then it gets worse and worse, and then they leave. Just wanting a quick idea of what are the main routes to becoming a child missing education?
I could, I'll field this one too, I will field this one to Matt, because whilst I can talk about it, so can he, so I'll.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, there are a number of routes. The key routes are, as I mentioned, families coming into this area of the country or moving into this country. We have children who are accompanied or unaccompanied coming into the country. We have children who, families who may be offered provision, and we have a provision in place for that family, but the family choose not to take up that provision for a number of reasons. And that can be one of the reasons why a child, by missing education for a long period, it isn't necessarily that the provision isn't in place, it may be that the family aren't willing to engage with any provision or that particular provision. And we do have a number of families where we are trying to support the family to do so. It can be that a child is permanently excluded, and we are looking to find the right provision for that child, and looking at the right provision, but that mainstream or alternative provision. And it can be that there's a reluctance from some families to engage with certain types of provision, so it can take a while to find the right provision for that family. And we have to be creative at looking at different options and some bespoke packages to get the right provision at the right time for the right child or young person. It can be that we have a number of children who have been electively home-educated, and the decision by the family is that they no longer want to do so, or that we as a local authority establish that that elective home education isn't delivering a suitable education, so that child will then return to being on roll at a school. Occasionally, it can be that a child's name is removed from a school role by mistake, is an error, just a, you know, a system error, and so they haven't been missing education at all, it just presents that they have, because it's just administrative. Yeah.
I'll just make one, well, emphasise one point about that description, particularly based on councillor Clayton's reference to the high-profile child murder. One of the things that we do, we have got better at, and we are more precise at, is where a child is, a parent has electively home-educated their child. The local authority has a loose duty around assessing the suitability of education, and that can be quite challenging in terms of the parent's right to say, no, we're doing this, thank you very much. What we have done in the last, what we have improved and got a lot better at, is between our teams of elective home education, perhaps a social care team and the missing education team, is to very quickly make that suitability assessment. And where we are concerned that it is not suitable education, we act on that, and we are saying, no, this is a child that is missing education, because we can see it is not a suitable education. And that's, those children come through to missing Mondays, and we will then actively work with them to get them back into school. That what we are seeing from the latest bill is a strengthening of that approach, but to be honest, we have not been acting unlawfully, because we're always acting in the interests of a child and fulfilling our responsibilities. This should just make it clearer in terms of what we can and can't do.
Matt, do you want to come back? Yeah?
Well, I've got another slight related question, unless someone else has got a question, I'll let someone else jump in.
As I'm the chairman, I can choose. I just want to, before I bring you back in, I just want to ask Sarah a direct question on exactly what she has just said, so we don't move away. And that was really, really helpful, Sarah, on that. So just to be clear, in my mind, in terms of the numbers, children missing in education, whether that's an open investigation, I suspect it will be, but in those numbers, some, I suspect small number, will be home-schooled, but not necessarily getting the appropriate level of education from the local authority. Is that correct?
So they will have started their journey as electively home-educated, in that the parent will have taken, made the decision or choice to do that. In our assessment, we have said, no, that's not a suitable education. We don't double count, so they're not on an EHE number as well. They are, no, this child is missing education, therefore we need to act to support that child. Does that answer your question? Yes, they will be included, but they are not double-counted, in that they're not appearing on an EHE list as well. Yeah?
Understood. Right. Matt, do you want to come back in?
So kind of you, Chair. Yeah, thank you. All question-related, I suppose, but this is just thinking, there was a case I read about just a couple of days ago in Hackney, about, you've probably seen, I think it was in Moss, Mossbourne Academy, so they're kind of rated outstanding by Ofsted and think to be, you know, doing really well. But there've been, the local council, I think Hackney, have kind of looked at themselves, you know, serious case of harm, because the school was exceedingly strict, and it ended up kind of particularly the more vulnerable children, SEND, were kind of like, you know, examples of being shouted at every day, and then, you know, 14-year-old children starting to saw on themselves who've never done it before. So it's like, there is obviously an aspect of this, and I think it comes back to your CCAS meetings you have about the children who cannot attend school. It could be, they cannot attend maybe the schools in their local area, because none of those schools in the local area maybe can cope with them, but actually, some other schools maybe could. I mean, we've got lots of examples of those, lots of different schools, some are really, you know, parents say, oh, this school's actually really good with a child with EHCP, even though they're just a mainstream comprehensive school, for example, but that school, not so good. So it's kind of understanding, is there things that schools are doing that are maybe creating some of this, children missing education, because they start kind of like, there are some schools where you use part-time tables quite quickly, and then maybe suspension, then expulsion, and then it leads down this route and end up eventually home education or something like that. How do we kind of focus on those schools that maybe are not as good as others at dealing with the more difficult children, put it that way? Thank you.
Will I respond to that? So, yes, I think we have to recognise that a child missing education, if we look at, you know, a child who is, where we find themselves in that category or that experience of, their school experience has been so poor, and the relationship is so poor, that they, it results in them not being on the role of a school. As I was saying earlier, you can see the risk factors in place that can result in the child not being on the role of a school. So do we have, so the language, this language around something called off-rolling, which is schools actively encouraging families to make decisions about removing their child, pointing to a school that might be better for their child, or providing an option about electively home educating? Yes, that does happen. Is that prevalent across Worcestershire schools? No. Has that position improved? Yes. How do we know that's improved? Over the, I would say, over the past five years, five years, the requirement for transparency at a school level around their actions and decision-making has improved greatly. So what are the data that we now use to monitor, as does the DFE and as does Ofsted? We're guessing they have a much, much higher return. There are very, very few schools, in fact, we've got no schools at the moment that are not returning attendance data, 100%. That's good, that's good, that's good for, in national comparisons, that's good. Our relationship with schools is strong, and it is recognised by the DFE that our relationship with schools is strong. And I do, I keep, I realise that a colleague, Tim, is on the panel as well, and may have questions or want to comment, but obviously, we work very closely with the diocese and making sure that our contacts, every contact that we have with schools counts. And one of those principles is making sure that you are, schools are providing the best education. So expectations, to summarise, expectations and guidance, statutory requirements have improved, and everyone is asking the right questions. Does that mean you eliminate it completely? No, you don't. I think as well, our families are better, and some families are more enabled at raising concerns themselves, and the roots to, the roots to raising concerns are greater, either directly through the DFE, through Ofsted, through our own relationships. So I think that we, in terms of, are we doing as much as we can? Yes. But, you know, going back to, does this ever happen? And really sadly, sadly it does, and that's why we have to keep, you know, we keep on trying to understand it together and understand the issues.
Very much for that. Right, I've got councillor Ditte, and then I want to go to Debbie Lamont after councillor Ditte, please.
Thank you, Chair, that's very kind. Question for Sarah, I think you're, I'm trying to work out in my mind, missing Monday is the diagram. If a child, first of all, whose priority is it to report? Is it the school to the, because you've got a body that sits, I assume that the school would be represented on that, you know, meeting that you have a, is it every Monday that you meet? Or, and what, I just need a, sort of in my mind, breakdown of what time it takes for a child to be on our sort of radar, and then I'll follow up from that, if that's all right with Chair.
I'll start, I'm going to hand to Matt for some helpful illustrative detail. So the, schools have a duty to report irregular absence, and we, they've got better and better at that, but what that means is, gosh, they get better and better at it, we get more and more, and we've had to, we've had to move our resources around. We, two years ago, we were in quite a severe place of having a lot of notifications, and it taking us what we felt was too long to deal with those notifications. We've got a lot better, we've moved resources around, we've put more resources at what I call, you know, the education front door. In terms of a child missing education, so not on the role of a school, a school may say, may get in touch and say, this child has left, and we have no idea where they've gone, and that does, that's one aspect of it. But equally, it is the responsibility of any, you know, public, the public can call in, just as they can around safeguarding issues, to say, you know, there's a child, but we don't think they're accessing any education. But equally, our other professionals, health, police, social care, yeah, it is everyone's duty to report that. I'll hand to Matt then, in terms of the, to describe the processes and how long then it takes to get to a particular point of action.
Thank you. So in terms of being allocated to CME team, the notifications come through the Children's Services portal, and then they are triaged and allocated through the lead for that team to a CME caseworker. In terms of missing Mondays, you mentioned about the route into that, that's the predominant route, is that cases are referred by the CME and attendance team, because they are cases where they have applied the usual initial steps to make sure that child is engaged in education, and they haven't been successful. So it's brought to that panel for a multi-agency approach, to make sure everybody's working collaboratively to do everything that's needed to support that family and child in securing the right school place or education place for them. Missing Mondays also has referrals that come in through social care and through health and through all of our other partners. So it may be that a case has been raised in our Get Safe process through social care, and we have a number of cases that are raised that way. So they're really the cases where the standard protocols have been implemented and they haven't succeeded, therefore it needs a more intensive and more collaborative approach to make sure that they are having their needs met. Therefore, it needs a more intensive and more collaborative approach to make sure that they are having their needs met.
Just to follow up, so just to recap, I mean, assuming that it would take to two to three weeks. I think that if they've missed the first period of the week, then that means it will be following week. And the irony is that, I mean, ultimately, when do we intervene as a city, the county responsible for education? When do we take over from that body that, hang on a minute, something's not right, we will investigate? When, when does that kick in? That's all I'm trying to get to.
Well, it's immediate because as soon as we know that a child's missing education, then our workers will pick that up immediately. So there is, there is no delay from other agencies. As soon as we know there's a child's missing education, that work commences straight away.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of questions actually. What processes do you have in place to check that part time timetables are legal? The, with a, with a part time timetable, it is, this is a bit of a difficult one, isn't it? With your microphone and wanting to make sure that you're making eye contact. I don't know how well this moves, not, not very well. So part time timetables is, it is the, is a facility to a school. It is a, it is a legal facility a school can use and actually can be, it is, the principle behind the use of a part time timetable should always be that it is a tool to improve access to education. An apologies, I may be stating the obvious, but I think it's important for the public meeting to hear that. And it is the school responsibility to make sure they use that tool effectively. Do we have in our oversight of part time timetables, as much confidence that we would want that a part time timetable is being used for a positive outcome and there is a very clear end date on that? No, we absolutely, we absolutely don't. And I think we find schools in a position sometimes where they're using a part time timetable and they have not really thought through the, very, the positive impact of that. And they can become too open, they can become too open-ended. I will hand to Daniela in terms of, I, I think where a child has no additional need and there is a part time timetable in place, then we would, it is, that absolutely really is in respect of the school's responsibility to, one, let us know, but two, to manage it. I would say Ofsted will, when they go in and inspect schools, they look, they absolutely look at the children and they do that through the attendance monitoring. What, do you use part time timetables? If so, who for? And, you know, what, what is the positive outcome of that? So Ofsted is one way of doing it. If a, if a child has an additional need and at an SCN support level, that likely again will be managed at a school level. If there, if the child is open to children's social care and has a social worker, we would expect that as part of the core group for oversight of that child's plan, a part time timetable needs to be clear in the assessment. Is that part time timetable a protective factor or an additional risk? And what's happening there? I would say, do we always get that right? Probably not, but we've got better at it. Where a child, Matt could tell you in great detail in terms of our looked after children, a looked after child on a part time timetable, your learning advocates will have full oversight of the, the, the purpose and outcome of that. And then for children with an EHCP, the, the SEND team should be notified of that. And then it's about that discussion about how is this serving the child's needs? But I'll hand to Daniela if you want to add some more, which I'm sure she will.
Yeah, just a little bit more. So we are looking specifically about our part time table, timetables for our children with HCPs and ensuring they're being used as a mechanism to support reintegration, to enable them to access what's within section F of their plan and enable them to be in the provision that is outlined in their plan. So it not being a, used as a, it's used as an interim measure rather than, that's the expectation. Some of our children, young people will have part time timetables alongside a different provision. So it adds to their education or provides them with something different to do in that time, which enables them to regulate or to engage fully when they are in their mainstream school or in their primary provision. So we are understanding better those that are on part time timetables and how they're being used and looking at the efficiency of those within the context of that child, young person and their educational journey. So very child level rather than a whole school approach.
Can I have one, yeah, just one more really quick question. It's around the children who aren't attending school but who are on role of a school. Primarily the ones that perhaps aren't attending regularly because the school is struggling to meet their needs. So they could potentially be waiting for a specialist place, whatever. Do you report that data, that the numbers around those? And also where, where a school can no longer meet needs, obviously they will have had the funding for the HCP. Do the council get a refund on that? I will start that and I will, I will see if colleagues want to add more. Just to finish on your part time timetable question, Debbie, I think it's really important that we would say, we've seen an increase in, we've seen an increase in part time timetable reporting. Part of the reason, just acknowledging with panel, is that we've seen that increase because schools realise they have to report more. This is an area that we would want to see, you would want to see decreasing. It's very, part time timetable is a facility. Probably what we would want to see in more detail is the length of a part time timetable is probably a better indicator of its suitability than the amount. We are, this is an area of data which is very hard for everybody to gather and monitor. So we're making some good steps, but is there more to do? Absolutely. But we would, we don't want to see, we don't, we don't think, and why should we? Why should any of our children have to experience a part time timetable? Though sometimes we see children where absolutely, we have children, for example, with a long Covid as a, as that's quite a current issue and something that we're working with our house colleagues on. Sometimes that part time timetable is absolutely right for them because it is what they can manage. But this is an area where we don't go, oh, oh, look, there's 692 part time timetable children that we've been notified of on a part time timetable in this academic year so far, oh, that's, that's okay. We've, you, it's one to have close scrutiny on. Sorry, because I'll now go on to the, the rest of the question. Which I've conveniently, I've now started to write it down and forgotten. Reports, tell me again, what was the first part?
It was reports of the children that are on a school role or could be on a school role, who are awaiting this place because that school can't meet needs, so they're not, not attending.
So yes, we do. We do monitor that. I'll, it, it partly again, isn't always a child who has got additional needs or an EHCP. It can be, you know, it can be a child where, you know, those needs are currently being identified. So we do report, we monitor it and we report it as part of the SEND improvement work. And again, I'm not going to quote, I have got the figures in my head, but I'm not going to quote them now for fear of getting them wrong. Daniela, unless you want to, unless you've got them to, to hand now. But they are, they've got, they are numbers that have got, that have got slightly lower, but we've maintained as a, so a child who we, where we've identified, actually they need a different placement. In the meantime, what we do do is put in other, other education. So our numbers where a child, and this is really important, where we've got a child with additional needs with a plan and it is known to us that they are not receiving a suitable education are very, very small because it will be at the point of notification. And as Matt said, and Daniela will, as soon as we know that, we will do something about it. But it's, that's all monitored through SEND, SEND Improvement.
Okay, thank you for that. Right, I've got councillor Clayton next, then Tim Reid, please. Right. We'll move swiftly on then to, to Tim Reid, please.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah, I wonder, for context, sorry, I'm very croaky. For context, if you could be able to give us the, the numbers of electively home educated children. We've got the number of children at statutory age and the number of children missing education. But I think for panel, that'd be really helpful to understand that number. And then secondly, I just wonder whether there's that link between CME children and EHE children? What the process of suitability looks like? And then where children are deemed to not be missing education and now electively home educated? What the kind of, you mentioned about the robust monitoring, what that monitoring and how often is that? When a child has moved from being missing to electively home educated?
Okay, yes, we do have, we do have the numbers for elective home education. Matt will just get them up now. That's reported. So we monitor EHE internally weekly as a breakdown. I'll keep talking while he gets, gets the number, it changes every day. So if you can either give us the, the latest monthly data, Matt, or the weekly data. And we break that down by vulnerable group as well. It's, I want to say it's in the 1300 region. So we'll get that for you. In terms of process for EHE and suitability, so all we are allowed to do at the moment is to ask for evidence of. So what happens is the registration or the, the request or the notification, sorry, notification comes through. That can come through in a variety of ways. It can come through via the school and if a child is going off a role of a school and onto EHE, we do, we expect to report back from the, the school about that. But once we've got that notification, then the EHE, the worker will make contact, direct contact with the family. If that child has a particular vulnerability and if they're open to children's social care, you do have an in, you know, if, if they are open to a statutory assessment or indeed a child protection plan, then you are able to enter the home and you are able to see that environment and consider, you know, the suitability of education. If they are not, then it is, it is based on the parents providing evidence of delivery of what we would call, you know, core, core subjects. It is quite a limited, it is a limited check. And the reason it is a limited check is because we have no powers. You know, the local authority has no powers beyond that request for evidence. And we use that. But what we, what I would say is we make that direct contact with the family. Our team have a good relationship. There is an EHE community, you know, that, and we, we do, we've said at the beginning of this meeting, it is a parental right and some of our families deliver fantastic, you know, education. And we also support with the access to exam centres for children who are electively home educated. You know, so there is a community that is very ably delivering education to their children. We have a good relationship with that community and that is welcoming of, of any parent that, that chooses to electively home educate their child. So in terms of that process, we have a, we have a relatively quick, and it's a week's time scale to get in touch. And within, within, basically within half a term, and there are no statutory set down of you must do this. It is local authority, check the suitability. We, we set and it's reasonable that within half term, we want to establish whether this education is suitable or not. If we deem it not, then we are making that decision that actually we move this into a different arena of discussion. And, and sometimes it may as a result of that, that we see better evidence. But I think under the current legislation, you know, our, our levers are limited, but we've done quite well in Worcestershire to, you know, to, to maximise every opportunity to do that. Have I answered everything of our other numbers or do you, have I?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think so. I mean, it's from, from children that go from missing an education to a EHE. What's the kind of, is there a more robust process of checking those children?
I'll let Matt cover that.
All right, Tim. So yeah, the total is 1369 at the moment in terms of electively home educated. Obviously from a, a different groups of families. In terms of moving from missing education into EHE, that's far less common. Traditionally, it's children coming out of elective home education and by default, they are then missing education because they are no longer electively home educated and thus are missing on a school role whilst we find them a school role. If there are child missing education who moves into EHE, then we'd have that same robust triage and assessment process to make sure that was a suitable education that they're being provided. It's worth noting that there are some children who have been on role at a school and the parents have removed them from school, which is their right to say, we'd like to electively home educate, following that conversation with the family. If we feel that the family had any kind of pressure to remove them from the school role, rather than doing it as a lifestyle choice, then the team have very robustly supported and challenged schools in that regard. And we have particularly over the last year when we've made the process more robust, had a number of children immediately returned to that school role.
Okay, thank you. I've got one further question from councillor Jenkins, I believe.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. There's always one more for me, I know. It's like Columbo, isn't it? Finally. Do you know that? Yeah, okay. Yeah, it's just thinking back to kind of the part time timetables and that, how that certainly is increasing. Hopefully it's just more reporting, but you know, it is worrying that there are so many. And just thinking, is a, part of that reason is, we know from our previous panel where we looked at SEND and issues about provision, things like that. We know like Fortwell, I know, has had to turn away lots of pupils because they just haven't got capacity. There must be some aspect of those pupils that couldn't get the send provision that maybe they wanted. They're going maybe into a mainstream school which is struggling to cope with them, therefore they're going onto part time timetable. So is maybe the increase in part time timetables part of a symptom of the fact that maybe just don't quite have enough provision for those children? So they're maybe not in the right setting and that's the best they can manage is they're going force onto a part time timetable. Would that be, okay, good summary?
I think that's a reasonable reflection that in part, and it is important to stress, to scrutiny when we are looking at part time timetables, that we are looking at a universal group of, of children, young people. But I think it is, that is correct, that for some children where the provision is not, that their needs have changed and the, the provision is not meeting their needs, or it has been identified they need a different provision and we haven't got it, the part time timetable maybe being utilized. That's right. With good oversight, with good oversight, though, we should be making sure that there is additionality in that. And if there is other, and Daniela talked about it earlier, if there is other provision that is needed that we add to that. But I would say, yes, you know, that may be, that may be part of the, of the feature. And, you know, we're getting better at understanding all of, all of those things. We certainly wouldn't try to, to be hiding that or masking it.
Yes, one further point.
And finally, I'll just have, what I've just realised as I was listening and thinking, I, I have a feeling that maybe we didn't respond fully to one of Debbie's questions and councillor Clayton raised it as well, I think you raised it as well, which was about schools where, or arrangements where we have children with education, health and care plans and we are paying addition, we are paying a school to educate that child full time and they are not attending full time. You did ask it, didn't you?
Yeah, I, I did, but also asked if, if the school can no longer meet needs, so the child stops attending and is awaiting a specialist placement, does the council get the money back from the school?
So, yeah, that, so it's, it is the same, it's the same question. Are we consistently really robust with that? Not as much as we would want to be? Have we got better at it? Yes, we have. Where it works very effectively is with our medical education service. So where this child is on the role of a school and they are delivering, then child is on the role of a school and they are delivering, then we bring some of that funding to support the child. Sometimes it's about the lag of identification that can affect that. So I would say, yes, we do. Do we always do it as clearly and as quickly as we want to? No, we don't. I don't know if Daniella wants to add any more to that.
Yeah, I can just add, so those children, young people from EHCP, we have a new form within our system that has, I was in a meeting today about, and that will be a much more reactive way of ceasing funding for schools. And again, in some of those cases, we're better retrieve as well. And that's based on it being integrated into our system whereby when we have, when we know a child, a young person's placement has ended, we update it within the system in which we're recording on a daily basis. It doesn't need to go to a separate team to undertake that, and that will then link into our finance system. So the payments will cease for that provision as well.
Thank you for that, excellent. Sarah, one...
One final, apologies, I'm trying to be helpful here for panel. And Chair, you asked us about a breakdown of data around children missing education in terms of, and including some timescales and ages, and you may want to see gender in that as well. Because we report quarterly on children missing education, are I, in the performance reporting? Yes? Would it be helpful for us to review that dataset and make our proposals to you as the Chair as to how we may give that picture in that quarterly reporting? Then it's, then it's there, rather than give you a one-off table?
Absolutely, Sarah. I think that would be really, really helpful, actually. And on the back of that, whether it's relevant for the performance data or not, but I would like to know, not for now, but maybe elsewhere, how we compare? Because I don't know, in the context of our statistical neighbours, whether these are really bad figures, really good figures, you know, they're expected on a national norm, and however good our policies, however good our monitoring and reporting are, we're always going to get children to fall through the cracks, want for a better word. So I'd be interested, maybe not for now, but in terms of national, local data, to see how good or even how bad we are.
DFE data was published yesterday on children missing education, and I wrote it down in my other book, and I think it was about thirty, oh, there you go, look at that. I want to say it was about 39,000 for last, 39,400 for last year. 39,200, so I was 200 out, sorry. That's, that's in the autumn, that's actually in the autumn term, and it was 30,000 for last year. Anyway, so yes, there are, there is a national picture. I was thinking about this yesterday as I was driving home. This, what we would need to look at is, it's a rate, so you would look, you know how we look at rates for children who are looked after by per 10,000? It would be the rate. I'm going to just, Matt's part of the regional network on all things vulnerable children in education, and he will give you a little bit more detail. One of the issues with reporting on children missing education is what data the local authority are using in their dataset to build up that picture. But this has just been published yesterday. We will, I expect us to look at that quickly in terms of how can, how is that useful for us as an authority to see, to see how we're doing? I would say one of the caveats behind that, or the levels of assurance either way is, you only know what you're being told, is one aspect of it. And, but to counter that, for scrutiny question, when we look at the, so how do you identify? What are you doing with your schools? What are your numbers doing? What do you understand? Worcestershire, we know through external scrutiny and our own kind of ongoing developments that we are quite good at capturing the information. As I said, never say we're perfect. So we've got new data, we'll look at it, but Matt maybe, because he's part of the regional group, just be able to add a bit more, because there has been some regional work ongoing.
Thank you. I would just say, regionally and nationally, an increase in those CME-reported figures, there's a real complex story behind it, as you say, because it isn't necessarily that the number, the frequency of children who are missing education is increasing, because actually it's largely about the data quality and recording practices that's happening. So nationally, the increased clarification of what CME is defined as, and schools understanding that, and families understanding that, and other agencies understanding that, means that the frequency at which children missing education is reported has increased, which is really positive thing, because it means we are identifying children missing education. They aren't falling through the cracks, as you say. So there was a significant increase nationally from 33,000 last census to 39,200, as Sarah said, this census. The increase locally in Worcestershire hasn't been as significant as that, and that's partly because our ability to identify and increase the reporting of CME has been over a longer period. So we've done a good chunk of that work. We are getting greater numbers reported now by parties other than schools, so families, concerned members of the community, GPs, health professionals in other settings, youth justice, all sorts of different sources. So it's really difficult to identify with the trends, whether it's necessarily because of an increase in CME itself, or whether it's a positive increase because the numbers being reported are increasing. And I think we'll only have a more robust picture of which of the two that is, once those processes are fully established locally and nationally, because we'll then know, well, everyone does now know, everyone is reporting, so we can see that these numbers are directly related to the numbers who actually are CME.
So if we try, based on your question, we will look at the latest national data, and we will, we will establish what we think a reasonable comparison is. I would, I would prefer to present that with, at scrutiny to understand it, rather than just plonking it into quarterly performance data, because you need to have that context. Or I can put it in the, we can put it in the performance data and just discuss it in the performance data. Yeah, actually, we'll do, we'll do that with commentary. Yeah, okay.
Excellent, right. We've given that item a very, very thorough airing. Do we have any further final questions or comments from any member? No? Okay, firstly then, are we happy to note the report as printed? Secondly, we are asked to discuss, or even consider, whether we want any further information or scrutiny item, or whether we wish to make any further comment to the cabinet member. I'm very satisfied, obviously, as interim chairman today, I am very satisfied with the in-depth debate we've given this. I would say that, as I've said earlier, I think the monitoring, the reporting, the processes we have in place, I think are very, very good to capture that data. I think working with partners is excellent. I think it is a complex issue, it's a really, really complex issue, and, you know, issues that obviously go deep and beyond us, but, you know, I think we are in a good place. I think the Missing Mondays is exceptionally good practice. So I've got nothing, that I don't think we need any more information, I don't think we, I'll come back to you in a minute, Brandon, but I don't think we need any, any further sort of information. But what has, what has leapt out at me is that the debate has morphed into, and rightly so, I've got no issue with it, has morphed into elective home schooling. And this is, you know, a growing area, and it's one area that my particular knowledge is not that good on. Obviously, we've got the work programme item to debate later and consider. It may be something that we look to put onto the work programme, to have a substantive item and a deep dive into. So I'll just put that out for further consideration. Councillor Clayton, your hand was up.
It was, Mrs. Chair, and for that particular reason, actually, because it was discussed during the debate, about talking about it, so, and to me, it makes more sense, because there are a number of issues, because you've got two different types of children, if I can put it that way, because it's, some of the questions, I think it would be better for a separate report for it entirely.
Absolutely echo that sentiment, councillor Clayton. Right, with nothing further to add, can I just thank Sarah, Matthew and Daniella for their professionalism and in-depth answering to our questions, very, very helpful on that. Right, we will move on to the second substantive item, which is value care and foster care remuneration, pages 13 to 16 of your agenda. Who is introducing this? Maria, good afternoon, Maria.
Hello, everybody. So my name's Maria Weiss, I'm the Assistant Director for Permanency Care Proceedings Fostering and Adoption, and I'm just going to talk you through the paper before you on valuing care and foster care remuneration. So it's an update in relation to the work that we did with Empower, but the report also gives you an overview of Worcestershire fostering recruitment. So I'll just kind of pick up the salient points within the report. So Worcestershire fostering took forward the implementation of Empower's valuing care approach, and the implementation took place between June and September of this year. So the valuing care approach is, oh, is that better? Sorry. Okay. So the approach, the valuing care approach, it's Empower's valuing care approach, and it allows social workers, commissioners and leaders to get an understanding of a child's needs, and also to support in their outcomes. So the valuing care approach has a profile, a child's profile that is completed, and that profile identifies all of the children's needs, and we also have a profile for foster carers, and what we're able to do is to look at the children's needs, to look at the foster carer's skills and capabilities, and we're able to kind of overlay them and to see whether those foster carers can meet the needs of those children. So the work was part of a drive to strengthen foster care matching, the utilisation of our foster care placements, and also looking at how we support our foster carers too. It was also, there was two work streams, the matching utilisation and support was one work stream, and the second work stream was focused on the recruitment and retention of foster carers. So the report kind of explains that, like many local authorities across the country, Worcestershire, we've been facing some challenges in terms of foster care sufficiency. What we've seen is that although our inquiries are increasing, our approvals are remaining static, so we're getting the inquiries through the door, but converting those to approved foster carers is more challenging, and has been more challenging. And that is also, because we have a cohort of foster carers who are older, we're actually seeing more of our foster carers choosing to retire. So our foster care numbers are declining, and we've seen that decline since 2020, 2021. The paper provides our five-year analysis in terms of trend data around recruitment and assessment data for Worcestershire fostering, and the data does show that it is an improving picture in terms of the numbers of inquiries, but as I say, that's not translating to an increased number of foster carers. This year alone, we've seen, in the paper it says 105 inquiries, data as of today, that's actually increased to 114 inquiries, and when we look month on month, we can see that our inquiries are increasing month on month. So July, we had seven inquiries, August 13, September 14, and November 18. So we can see that we are attracting people to Worcestershire fostering. We've also increased our number of initial visits, we've had 27 initial visits so far this year, and we've got four carers in assessment, and we've got two approvals. So in terms of, what you'll see on the graph is that there is a large percentage, 80 withdrawals from the process, and the report kind of explains where those withdrawals are. And by and large, many of those withdrawals are to do with, once, once people understand what the fostering process is about, what becoming a foster carer entails, they make the decision that it's not for them, or they've got family issues that have just come up for them, and it makes it impossible for them to carry on with the process. What we do within Worcestershire fostering is we retain all of the inquiries that we've had, and if people decide to take a pause, then we can go back to them and have those conversations when it's right for them to progress within the recruitment process. In terms of the valuing care approach, we worked with Empower between June and September. We had the two work streams, and what we were, in terms of the first work stream, the valuing care approach, in terms of matching, we had an opportunity to look at our current foster carer cohort, to complete the valuing care profile in relation to them, to look at what their skills and capabilities were. So we, we did that with all of our foster carers. What we also did is, the cohort of children who are currently within residential care, we undertook to complete the child's profile on them, and we were able to look at where we could find a match. And what we were able to do through the work with Empower was to identify 26 opportunities for step-down from residential care into family-based homes. It was also family-based homes, but also looking at renification, and whether some of our older young people could step down into semi-supported living. What we've seen with the implementation of this approach, the valuing care approach is now for us business as usual, we have developed the valuing care matching panel, which is a panel which includes fostering service, senior managers from the social work teams, the virtual head is also part of that panel, and within that panel, we look at all of the profiles on the children that have been completed, we look at our foster carers, and we look at where we can identify a match. We have been able to identify 26 opportunities for step-down, and that's out of a cohort of 67 children and young people. Of the 26 children for step-down, 14 to 21 of those children have been identified to be able to step down between six and 18 months. And what we've seen is a, we've already started to see the, that, that we've already started to see that those step-downs are starting to be realised. So in November, we stepped down two young people from residential care into a foster So in November, we stepped down two young people from residential care into a foster care placement. We've got another child who will step down in January of next year. And in terms of savings, it's the right placement for them because we've looked at their needs, we've looked at the capabilities of the foster carers and it is a good match for those children. But we're also going to be able to see savings in relation to stepping down from very expensive residential care placements. We've got another three children who will, we're planning to step down from residential care in, by the end of March. And a further two children who will step down by August. So out of that 26 children, we have eight who will, we will be stepping down before, by August of next year. That will leave a remaining 13 children who we are regularly reviewing within our value and care, our value and care panel. The paper also provides information in terms of our foster care remuneration. What you will see from that is that the, in terms of our specialist foster care, we're very competitive. We are the best in the region in terms of the financial remuneration that we provide to our foster carers, a thousand pounds. We pay plus the age-related allowance. But what you will see from the table is that we are no longer competitive with other local authorities within our region. So any questions?
Thank you Maria for that. I've got councillor Clayton, for bringing councillor Clayton. I just a quick question myself. In terms of the chart for the remuneration of foster carers, could you just explain in a little depth the difference in a level one, two and three, please?
So the different levels, level one, level two, level three is in relation to the experience of the foster carer. So when they first become a foster carer, they will come in at level one. And as they gain more experience, they will go to level two. And then our level three foster carers are our most experienced foster carers.
Okay, thank you for that. So in terms of moving, moving up the pyramid, is there a set timeframe to it? Or do you have to prove your competence? So it's not a clear case that if you pass, I'm going to make this up now. If you pass through the 12-month threshold, you automatically go on to level two. Is it as simplistic as that?
It's kind of linked to competency as well in terms of moving up the levels.
That's helpful. Councillor Clayton, please.
Thank you, Chair. Can I, if I look at the inquiries on the chart, to where we actually place foster children, can I try and work out the criteria for doing this? Is this a local criteria that the applicants have to fill in? Or is there a national criteria? Because I'm trying to work out that the why we have lots of people inquiring, then we don't place them, you see. Because they have to go through certain stages, I understand that and everything else. But it's the stages what I'm trying to get, look at. Is it national or local criteria first of all?
It's national criteria. So when somebody contacts Worcestershire Fostering, they can contact us in a varied number of ways. They can contact us through the foster care portal online, they can give us a call. When they contact us, we will have a conversation with them. And a lot of people will contact us and say, well, can you just send me some information? I just want to think about it. We can have a conversation on the phone with them, but they really just want the information. We take their details and we will, we will give them a period of time to obviously absorb that information once we've sent it out. But then we will kind of chase to see whether they are interested once they've had a look at that information. Once we've provided the information, we will then have that conversation with the prospective foster carer and say, so you've had the information, we'd like to come out and talk to you and talk about it in more detail. So we'd like to arrange an initial visit with you. So we then go ahead and arrange to meet with them and that could be face to face, it could be on Teams, whatever suits that person. From that initial visit, we will talk more in depth about what it means to become a foster carer. We'll talk about our foster care handbook, we'll go through the handbook with them. And we'll provide them with the foster carer application form. And what we'll say to them is, if you're interested, then we can arrange for you to go on to a skills to foster training course. So if we get to that point where they're interested, they want to know more information, then we'll book them on to a foster care skills to foster training course. Once they've been on that skills foster course, they'll get lots more information, they get an opportunity to meet with some of our current foster carers, to hear about what it means to be a foster carer. And they'll also understand our handbook, et cetera. From that point, they then go away and they have a think about, do they want to continue? Do they want to put in their application? And if they put in their application, we will then process that through to the assessment stage. Our assessment stage can take a number of months. So that can take anything from six to nine months, once the assessment is completed. Whether it's a positive or negative outcome, then that will go to our foster care panel for a decision. If it's a positive outcome, a decision to whether they should be approved or not. So it's the same process, no matter what local authority you have applied to.
Thank you for that. Because the wanting to know more about this, I went and seen one of my residents and who's been doing it for 20 odd years, fostering, and to get a better understanding. And she says to me that she has to jump through more hoops now than what she used to and things like that, you see. That's why, that's why I wanted to know about the criteria. Because it seems a shame that for whatever reason, what the criteria is, for this amount of inquiries, the amount of people who actually get approved is quite low when you look at it. And the, that's saying to me, is the criteria right? Are we putting too many constraints on it for various reasons? Which is why I wanted to know, you see, whether it was a local criteria or a national one. And it's something I think that the, we as councillors should look at. Because I think it needs changing because you are right. People, youngsters are better in foster care than in a home. Because for their own mental health, wellbeing, for, to say for a better word. So I thank you for that and I'll look into that deeper. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. I think just to, just to say, it's, the process is laid down by the DFE. It's within the foster care regulations of 2011. It's not something that we can change locally. It's obviously something that you could make representation to the DFE and the government. But as it stands at the moment, we, like all other local authorities, have to follow the processes that are laid down.
I'm going to bring in councillor Mackay, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Just as a little bit of context in there as well. I think it's also right to say that during the course of that process, which is, as you say, Brandon, is lengthy, the applicant may well have a family change as well. It could be that they decide that all of a sudden the time isn't right for them. It could be through job security, it could be through family problems, it could be the child issue themselves, that all make that difference all of a sudden during, as I said, during the course of the process. So, you know, it's not just, it's not just the process that causes the issue, it's the people themselves. Not always, but that can happen. And just to say, I actually managed to sit on one of the panels that was making the decision in relation to whether or not a carer should be appointed. And I would say that the questions that the person was asked were very, very pertinent. And I think they, there is always a degree of risk because you're asking for somebody to look after a child for, who you are a corporate parent for, just like me. And those considerations must take place. But I've got to say, I was very impressed with the way that the panel was conducted and conducted itself in that process.
I understood what you're saying, the from that stuff. And it's strange how things have changed. Because when you look back into the 1940s, thousands of children were moved from their own homes into various parts of the country to make them safe from bombing. And there was no checks in. Some bad things happened as well, Roger.
Absolutely. Maria.
I think just to reiterate what Steve has said really, I think the process is important, not only for us. It's important for prospective foster carers. It gives them an opportunity to really think about whether fostering is the right thing for them. And yes, it is intrusive, it's an intrusive process. It is asking a lot of prospective foster carers, it's asking a lot of detail about their past, their history, their relationships, why relationships have ended. But that's really important because that information actually lends it to how do they provide parenting? And what we need to know as corporate parents is that when we're placing children within foster care homes, that the people who are providing the care are the right people and they're doing it for the right reason. So it's really important. And I hear a lot of people saying, it's just too intrusive, we shouldn't be asking all of those questions. But it's really important we ask those questions because we're placing very vulnerable children into households. And those carers need to be able to meet the needs of those children. And we need to support them to do that.
Absolutely, fully agree with that. Right, I've got councillor Monk and then I saw, is it councillor Jenkins hand up? Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Okay, my question is relating to where you mentioned people retire at a certain age. What sort of age are we talking about? And what's the average age of people that apply to be foster carers? Thank you.
So in terms of retiring, it's not a particular age. So it's not, people get into like 65 and deciding that fostering is no longer for them. It can be younger than that. Some of our foster carers have been fostering since they were 40. So, you know, 15, 20 years into their fostering journey, they've, you know, things within their own family may have changed, they may have had, you know, their grandchildren may have had children and they want to be more available for their, for their own families. And we see a lot of that. Or just people deciding that fostering is no longer for them. They want some time to themselves, they want to travel or, you know, do something different. So there's no one set reason why people choose to no longer foster. In terms of age group, it's the older age group that we tend to attract. It's those people who have probably had a career and decided that they want to take a break from that and maybe put something back. We've recently been having discussions about how do we attract younger foster carers? You know, so those carers who are in their mid to late twenties, thirties and get them into the service earlier. So yeah, we've had those conversations, but there's no one reason. And as Steve said, things happen in families and that's the same for foster caring families as well. People become unwell or a partner will become unwell. And it's no longer viable for them to provide a good care for our children.
Thank you.
Councillor Jenkins.
Thank you Chair. It's a question around those numbers again about people withdrawing from the process. I mean firstly, you've also got people leaving and you've got new people coming in. Which is higher at the moment? Is it people leaving is higher than people coming in? Yep, that's right. I assume that, but yeah.
Yeah, people leaving is higher. And I mean, in terms of our foster caring numbers, that decline has been in place for the last four years or so. And then trying to attract people has been more challenging. And also, it's not just a local problem, it's a national problem for attracting people to the foster care profession. And you'll have seen in the media in terms of increased funding for foster care, kinship care. So it's certainly a recognised challenge across the country.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that. And then kind of the related question, I suppose is, we've got these figures of, clearly you're successful in promoting the idea, please become a foster carer. You get more people coming. But obviously, a lot of those people maybe are coming and don't know what the post, what it involves and go, ah, you know, I'm interested. Oh no, I really can't do that. So it's just kind of understanding, you've got these figures of how many are withdrawing. Kind of what stage of the process are they withdrawing and what are the kind of the main factors? I mean councillor Mackay mentioned some of the reasons why, yeah, family changes. But what are the kind of, outside of those, kind of my personal change, yeah, things have changed. But what is it kind of about the fostering process that people go, ah, I'm balking at doing that? Or I didn't realise it involved that? What are those kind of, what are the main ones that stop people?
Within the report, there's a focus on 24, 25. So we had 80 withdrawals and you'll see that 57 withdrew at the inquiry stage. Now, that could be, we had a high proportion of people who just contacted on the, online or rang up and said, can you send me some information? Just send me a, the information booklet. We take their details. But sometimes it's really difficult to, for the want of a better phrase, chase those people down. Because essentially, they just wanted to check it out and see what Worcestershire had to offer in terms of foster care and whether foster care was right for them. What we do know is that we have a number, a higher proportion of our carers who withdraw at the initial visit stage and also at the skills to foster stage, the training. And that's when they, they get to really hear what foster care is all about and what it will mean for them and what it will mean for them, their family, their birth children, if they have children. And the commitment that they, they need to make. And also the challenges that they might face. So we're not unusual, I don't think, when you look across other local authorities for a higher proportion of people to leave at those stages. And that's because they understand more what foster care is all about.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Ditter, was your hand up?
It was Chair, yeah, thanks for that. I'm just consciously quickly, maybe there's an obvious answer. I can understand level one and two because somebody answered the question and I got the answer. That was a level one and two, because somebody answered the question and I got the answer, that was tearing because of the experience, they were going up as a level. But I just couldn't work out why Worcestershire and Warwickshire is better than us, by the level of payment, are so different between all the different authorities. It's on page 16, you know, the graph where it says level one, two, and three. I mean Worcester is £102, and then, if you look, if I work at Warwickshire or at Foster, and I, I was getting that, why would I come to Worcester and get reduced rate? That's, that's a conference of interest. Maybe there's an obvious answer, but yes, please.
I think that's a good question. Up until April of this year, Worcestershire was fairly competitive with our neighbours in terms of our foster care remuneration. In April of this year, most local authorities have increased their foster care rates. You're absolutely right. If you, say if you're on the border of Warwickshire, and you're going to get paid £149 versus £102 for the fee, then there's, there's a consideration to, to take there. And, and, and money is important, and that's very much been drawn out by the DFE and the government in the last week or two. Money is important, it's expensive to raise children. So you're absolutely right, it creates a challenge for us in terms of attracting foster carers.
Just to come back on Chair, thanks. The money is important because the cost of living is so extremely difficult these days, maybe 10 years ago it was different. But beside that, if the national grid is that you're taking a national approach for the foster carers, if there is a format, why shouldn't there be a national sort of format for, for the level? That's what, I don't know what, what we can do, or go in love with the government, I don't know, but yes.
And that is, the, the, there is some focus in relation to that. So the last government introduced the fostering recruitment hubs, there was an amount of money that was provided to local authorities to look at providing a regional fostering recruitment hub. What's, what that has meant is that a number of local authorities have clubbed together, they work together, it's like a foster care front door for those local authorities. What it's meant for those local authorities who are part of that, those pathfinders, is they've had to think about how do we get consistency across local authorities? So if you are in Herefordshire and Worcestershire, you would get paid the same. Worcestershire wasn't part of those, those initial Pathfinder groups that were set up, those clusters. In the, in, there's been a recent policy statement from the DFE and government where they are opening up the region, the, the possibility of fostering recruitment clusters for the rest of those local authorities in the different regions. So we're part of the West Midlands, I was in a call yesterday with the DFE and Mutual Ventures, who are their partner, in terms of the fostering recruitment hubs, to look at whether local authorities within the West Midlands want to come together to develop a regional fostering recruitment hub. So that's something that we're starting to talk about, I've got a further meeting this week with other local authorities within the region. If Worcestershire were to do that, it would probably mirror the Regional Adoption Agency that we have through ACE, so working with local authorities like Warwickshire and Herefordshire, Coventry and, and Solihull. But that is something we're starting to have a conversation about.
I thank you for that, and before I bring in councillor Mackay, absolutely echo what councillor Ditto's sentiments really. Obviously, when I read this, that's not, I was surprised and startled at the discrepancy in our remuneration in Worcester vis a vis our local neighbours, and in particular Gloucestershire and Warwickshire in terms of level three. You know, the discrepancy is circa 40%, we're 40% below for, you know, a level three, 18% below Shropshire. And for me, those are unsustainable numbers now really, you know, because the other, because in, in the context that residential care now has become so expensive, coupled with the fact that fostering numbers are going down, then local authorities have, have done, you know, or pulled one of the only levers they can pull really, and that is trying to increase the remuneration, which I absolutely agree with. And I don't know what other panel members think, but I think it's absolutely incumbent upon us now in Worcestershire to increase those numbers, and I would urge the cabinet member, and obviously in consultation with the wider cabinet, as a matter of urgency, to, to see if it could be fed into the budget process, to see if we can get those, our remuneration up. Certainly right for level three, but I would recommend very strongly that levels one and two are also increased, because it's a false economy, you know, just look at the savings that, you know, in sections 10, 11 of the report, the savings, you know, from step down from residential care to fostering, it's huge, it's absolutely massive. So I would absolutely, you know, encourage, because as a member said, you know, the cost of raising a child in the modern day is very, very expensive, you know, from, you know, just the cost of food alone is very expensive, let alone the clubs, let alone clothing, let alone holidays. So, you know, in the grand scheme of, you know, £100 a, a week or so, it's exceptionally low. So I would urge, strongly urge, and I hope it's echoed by the members on the panel, that the cabinet member looks into, and I'm not going to be prescriptive and give an amount, which I think it should be, because I don't think that's right or proper, but in terms of the direction of travel, then I absolutely think we need to look at that as a matter of urgency. And on that, I'll bring in the cabinet member for a comment.
I will talk to my cabinet members, who were talking about a budget this morning. No Chair, I, I do take your point, I take your point seriously as well. A couple of things I would point out, we're not just up against other county councils, but we're up against independent foster carers as well. And I, I think it's right to say that as soon as we put our prices up as, or our remuneration up to the, to the carers, as would probably other county councils, but certainly the independents would as well, we're always going to have that, that difficulty. But the, the point I, I was going to make was, in particularly in relation to the specialist foster carers, we're looking at children here with more complexities, more, more complex behavioural issues, that are, we're seeking foster care for, that, that better, that more stable and loving relationship in homes. And there you will notice that we, we are above the, the other county councils. And that is because, as, as much as anything, if you're talking, you know, costings, those children cost more in, in care, in, in placements. So I ju, I just wanted to add that sort of context to it. But at the same time, I would like to, what I would like to stress is the fact that, well the old company that we were, were in was called Worcestershire Children First, we're still children first. This is about finances obviously, because it's not a finite pot, but what I'm saying is that the children come first, and we will match them accordingly, and we will always look for the best place for the child.
And I think that kind of brings it full circle to the work that we did with Empower and the Valuing Care approach, which is very focused on children's needs, and matching them appropriately to our foster carers. In, in terms of, in, in terms of our numbers of children who have stepped down, we have had, from, from the Valuing Care approach, we have two children who have already stepped down from very expensive residential placements into a family care unit, and both of those placements are going really, really well. We've got one that's due to step down in January. So what it tells us in terms of the Valuing Care approach, being very focused on children's needs, on the capabilities of our foster carers, we can match accordingly, and we can identify the best family home for our children through that approach. So it's been really helpful to do that piece of work with Empower. We're now embedding that within the service, so all of our children who become looked after will have a Valuing Care profile completed with them, on them, at their, once they've been looked after for four weeks. And we will, if they move into, if they're in a residential care home, we will actively, right away, start looking at how can we identify a family foster care home for them, and we'll do the work in terms of identifying the right match for them. So it's really important that we've got that approach, that we've established our Valuing Care matching panel. We have oversight of all of our children who come into care, who are in residential care, and we are tracking their progress to step down through the review of that panel. So it, it's been a really helpful approach, and, and what I can say, has been really well received by our social workers. The, the approach very much puts children first, and at the forefront in terms of any planning around their future care needs.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further questions, comments on this particular paper? Thank you Maria for that, I think it's been a really, really useful, right, paper and debate on it, I think we have given it a very, right, good airing. Firstly, members, are we happy to note the report is printed? In terms of making a request on that, I'm assuming you all agree with my sentiment that we just recommend to the cabinet member with responsibility of children and young people that they seriously look at the remuneration, and hopefully see if that can be fed into the budget process. But apart from that, I've got nothing further to add. Are we happy to note the report? Is that agreed? Thank you. Members, I've got myself off for some reason. Right, the final substantive item is the Work Programme, which is page 17 onwards of the bundle. Obviously, the next meeting has been changed, because the chairman and the vice chairman couldn't make it, so it is now the 27th of January, and the Work Programme is set out on page 19 and 20. Apart from the elective home education, is there any other areas for topics? Home to school transport, isn't that on it?
Yes, it's already there.
I, I thought it was already on it, yes. No, no, I said home education.
On the longlist, home education.
It's what, sorry?
On the longlist, education.
Yes, yes.
Home education, yeah.
Good stuff, okay. Are we happy to note that report?
Sarah, do you want to speak?
Oh, sorry Sarah, do you want to speak, sorry?
Sorry, I was just... Are you wanting the EHE on the January? No.
No.
Oh no, it's...
No, it's on a future one.
Sorry, it's going on the longlist.
It's going on the long, yes, absolutely, yes, on the longlist, yes.
The paddock's setting a fly, it's so long.
For the new...
I think everybody's got a chance.
Right, I haven't quite closed the meeting yet, Brandon. Yes? Brandon, I haven't quite closed the meeting yet, but you're obviously, you're obviously eager to go, I formally close the meeting, enjoy the rest of your day.